Mr. Johnston. Mr. Francis. Mrs. Erwin Adams. Miss, Dr. Malloy.
Here.
Mr. Hoff. Mrs. McGinnis. Mr. Mignon.
Here.
Mr. Greenwood. Mr. Cook.
Okay, I'd like to announce we had an executive session just before this meeting and that was for a purpose of personnel issues. Okay, at this time, we would hear from citizens. Any citizen wishing to address us, please state your name, address, and you'll have five minutes.
Kelly Bowers, twenty seven oh two Maple Avenue. Um, I wanted to talk a little bit about the SCA situation. Uh, I got that issues not too explicit page and I got a lot of parents reaching out to me because their kids is ours. They don't feel are being met. Um, or they just don't have SEAs, which they're kind, they're trying to be understanding about it because everyone knows that there is a shortage with SEAs. Um, so I was talking to some SEAs that just recently got hired and some SEAs that have been here for a number of years and the district, in order to get hired as SCA, out of pocket, you gotta put anywhere from a hundred and eighty, tell them it's two hundred and fifty dollars out. That's for a background check, child line clearance, drug testing, physical and TV test. And a lot of people that are going for this position, it pays twelve twenty-five an hour right now. A lot of people that are going for this position don't have college degrees, anything like that, and they don't have the extra funds to be able to do that. So I was doing a little bit of checking and there's different places other than where the district suggests that they go, that it would be a lot cheaper for them to get all this stuff done. Um, I was talking to Camilla about it a little bit, so I'll write that stuff up and email it to her. But another, another thing I was thinking about was if Yenska's would outsource SEAs as to a staffing agency, like how Yens do the substitute teachers, if Yens would use like Advantage Resource Group or Spheryon or um, Express Staffing, something like that. The reality is, in the long run, it would save the district a lot of money. I don't have the exact figures because I'm waiting on numbers from different agencies still. But even if Yens paid thirty percent to the agency for them to look for Yens staff, it would save Yens from having to recruit the staff. It would save Yens from having to pay workman's comp and all that other overhead stuff, the retirement stuff, how Yens match and everything like that. Um, so in the long run, it would save the district money. It would also help to retain SEAs because at twelve twenty-five an hour, if you work like thirty some hours every two weeks, you get sixty some hours, like you're bringing him, if you're lucky, under four hundred bucks for all that time. And if they work through an agency, their paychecks are actually going to be heavier because they're not going to have as much coming out as what the district has to legally take out of them. So it might help be able to retain some staff too, and it would take some of the stress away from the district from having to go out, recruit the staff and train the staff, some of the trainings, because like the mandated reporting training is a three-hour course that you can take online and you get a certificate at the end. So if Yenska's worked into the contract, if Yens did it with a staffing agency, that okay, so this is our expectation, whenever these staff come, they have all their clearances and they have mandated reporting training. Um, that way, that's all taken care of. And if Yens threw in there to the people that Yens were hiring, I know it's more money, but if you throw into, okay, so while you're waiting on your clearances and everything, if you don't have anything expected to pop up, why don't you reach out to the Red Cross or something, see a bucket in your first aid training? That knocks out two trainings that the district has to do for these people whenever they get hired. So that's going to save Yenska's money in the long run too. And if Yenska's, even if you don't go with an agency, or even if you do go with an agency, be like, okay, so Yenska's have to put out hundred and eighty bucks or two hundred and fifty bucks, you just give us the receipts and everything. If you retain, if you stay with us for ninety working days, that's ninety actual days that you work, we'll reimburse you for that. Let's be serious, Yenska's can't even keep SEAs for the most part for more than ninety days. So that might be a good way for Yenska's to actually get some people to stick around for at least ninety days, so Yens can start filling those positions. But I don't know much about anything. All I know is I'm looking at it from the sense of someone who doesn't have a lot of money and someone that wants to work and the people that are coming to me, they want to work too, but they don't have the money to put out in the start. And it definitely isn't worth it whenever you look at your paychecks in the end.
Okay.
And how many SEAs are we short right now? And how many do we have actually working in the district?
Okay, thank you, Kelly. All right, would anybody else like to address the board? Seeing no one, we'll go to item number three, which would be the minutes from our special board meeting of February tenth, our committee of the whole minutes from February twenty-second, and our regular board meeting minutes from February seventh. Is there a motion? Second? Second. Any discussion? Those in favor respond by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Okay, item number four. We have A, a list of payments. B, financial reports. C, federal budget adjustments. D, an addendum to agreement between AASD and ESS. Okay, is there a motion? Is there a second? For a second? Our second. Discussion?
Can you just give me an overview on what the federal budget adjustments are?
So when the original budget is, is set to go into PDE, we don't have our allocations from the state. And so mostly, uh, we budget for salaries of people that we know, for, for instance, Title One. We know that we have Title One teachers, Title One teacher aides. They are where we include them in the original general fund budget. Once we have our allocation, then we go in and adjust from the original estimated or estimated usually on the low end budget to the final budget to reflect the true allocation. That's basically for, there's there's only one budget that we may get our allocation beforehand, but all of the others are after the fact, and we have to do this every year, trying to catch, trying to catch up to reflect it. Correct. And for the most part, there's additional revenue that we didn't include in the first, in, in the initial budget because we're reflecting additional expenditures. For instance, in Title One, the parent involvement, once we know what our allocation is, then we know how much we have to allocate for parent involvement and, and for non-publics and, and all of that gets adjusted to tie to the, to the approved e-grant from PDE.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, those in favor respond by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Okay, number five, policy. We have four policies for the second reading, policy six ten, six eleven, six twenty-six and nine oh four. Is there a motion? Is there a second? Okay, discussion?
Right now, these policies reflect, reflect state requirements. What we do in-house is, is we have, we will shop and we will require people to shop for the best price and we'll ask them to get quotes, the best available price. Sometimes there will be contractors, et cetera, but we unless it's an emergency situation, we normally don't, we, we normally get three quotes for any, anything that's contracted, whether it be asphalt or concrete or anything like that. The small ones don't have to, they're out of budget. Well, that would be well, we run that through facilities. Literally, we go over it in facilities. But likewise, the facilities minutes are on the, are, are provided with the
Okay, any other discussion?
No, but along those lines, on the facility committee meeting minutes, there aren't numbers posted, so I don't know. I mean, that's, there aren't any, there aren't any amounts posted. Yeah, I was just following up. I don't, I don't know, I just looked at the current ones that are on the board agenda tonight, so.
We can make adjustments to how we, how we make the board aware of what we're doing with facilities. I see that's a big issue. Do you, Doug? Well, I, I think things that are done in budget, the budget, the board can be notified that we're doing them and how we're pursuing getting the best price.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor respond by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Okay, six, education. We have A, an affiliation agreement with Wilson College, B, elementary field trips, C, volunteer approval, D, secondary conference request, E, Stevens programming position approvals, and F, secondary field trips, G, federal and state grants. Is there a motion? Is there a second? Discussion?
Are we going to be able to afford a principal? Is that what I'm looking here? Is that what I'm looking at? A principal for and a guidance counselor, both? Is that what I'm reading? Is that correct?
Yes, two positions that were requested.
Can we afford a principal? I'm understanding, we don't know what we're getting from the state, we don't know what our budget's going to look like.
Brad, I, I would just say, I was gonna ask anyways in the discussion portion of this, if you could just briefly make the case that you made to us, because it's, it's a compelling case in the context that you put it in.
At the Stevens building, we're currently operating four distinct and separate programs that do require administrative oversight and a lot of coordination with our other ten buildings. The biggest piece of it would be the nearly six hundred students who are enrolled in our Altoona Cyber Academy, which requires a, a tremendous amount of administrative oversight from onboarding the students, communication with parents, grading and scheduling, and preventing those students from exploring outside cyber charter opportunities. That program alone, each one of those students represents, you know, a savings to the district, potential savings of anywhere between ten and twenty-five thousand dollars, depending on whether they are a regular ed or a special education student. They also are responsible for retention as well as recruiting students back from outside cyber charters, which once again, i- is a very advantageous money-saving budgetary approach to attracting those students back. In addition to that, uh, we operate three other programs, the PAWS program, services anywhere between ten and fifteen students of our highest need, high anxiety, social and emotional and special needs students in the former tax office location. That service is currently students in ninth grade, but will expand to ninth and tenth grade next year. The two programs that operate on the first floor of the building are the Kimmel Alternative Education Program, which can have up to thirty students, and our Success Choice Program, which is a program geared towards secondary students that are not experiencing experiencing success in either the junior high school or the high school. All of those students, up to sixty students, are potential candidates for placement in outside facilities for behaviors and/or additional services. So each one of those students, if we do not have that programming available, represents a potential cost of anywhere between thirty and seventy thousand dollars, including transportation per student. We're making a very conscious effort to try to provide a continuum of services for students within the school district, and those programs enable us to not refer students out to outside programming, which can be very expensive and is not effective. Um, we feel very strongly that we're able to provide a much better program in-house that can get kids on, on the pathway to graduation and being successful and productive citizens, you know, in our area or in, 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 when they graduate from high school. Um, in order to do that, we, we are currently double duty-ing or, or we're kind of sharing employees. We have roughly three and a half full-time instructional positions that are, that are working with all of those programs. We have a dedicated teacher and a contracted services with Blair Family Solution to provide outside supports for our therapeutic room, which is downstairs in the former tax office. Uh, we utilize multiple teachers as both Altoona Cyber Academy teachers and facilitators and providing programming to our success in our AEDY students. We have one full-time clerical for approximately seven hundred students. And at this point, we are, myself and our secondary administrative team are, are taking turns providing the administrative support for a very needy population, you know, down at that, at that institution. Um, our cyber numbers have grown to the point where our, our high school cyber academy principal has almost three hundred and seventy-five students that in addition to his day-to-day responsibilities, is managing all of their discipline graduation requirements, scheduling, counseling services, uh, at, at a stipend of three thousand dollars. Um, he, he's working probably an additional ten to fifteen hours a week outside of his regular day and expectations in order to do that. We, we've, pardon me? Yes, three thousand. I mean, pardon me? N- n- no. I mean, so, I mean, at this, the programs have grown to the point where they are, number one, they're, they are saving the district a tremendous amount of money, but they are not manageable from an administrative standpoint to be able to sustain services for that, for that number of students. I mean, we're running a budgetary deficit. I mean, that, that's something that we discuss at all times. In my opinion, if you look at the, the consequences of not having that program, we can't not afford to do it. Brad, we're absolutely.
Weren't we, I mean, w- we considered this an investment sort of in which you expect a return on your investment, and the, and the return would be if you're able to probably retain or attract four to ten more kids into that program, it probably pays right?
Absolutely.
Four to ten's probably the range?
N- n- not even. I mean, it, it's sixty-eight thousand for the administrator and, you know, for an additional ten thousand for the stipends. If you look at just, I mean, theoretically, one student who doesn't go to an outside placement that we can educate in that environment, this is not an ACA student, this is a student that would be going to an outside private placement that will cost us anywhere from two to three hundred dollars per day, plus transportation. You have to have somebody to be able to manage.
The answer is no and yes. No, we don't have the money. We're broke. There's no question, we're running a deficit. No, I Okay, but the point is, we're saving, we have thirty students approximately in outside placements. That's down from probably in the neighborhood of a hundred. Can, may I please finish? In order to run what we're trying to run, there's a cost involved. And in order to inter, to run these things internally, when you're talking about approximately seven hundred students worth of impact in three, four different programs, we need to have an administrator who is dedicated to doing that. Literally what's happening now is we're running people down there for, for four-hour shifts to make sure we have what we need and, and this, the whole charter, the cyber charter or the running the cyber program in and of itself warrants having a principal. I understand from a financial standpoint, if you look at it as dollars and cents, you are correct, we do not have the money to cover it, but at the same time, the cyber program in and of itself is saving us in the neighborhood of five to six million dollars a year. If, if this keeps the cyber program effective, then the principals paying for themselves.
And probably the, uh, special needs children who now need to be sent to a program that's not in our district. That's very, very costly and, and, and I don't just, being able to save even one here in terms of serving in our district would pay for that principal's stipend, but as a question is with the, uh, with, with the, excuse me, Dave. Okay, you had the floor. All right. What I wanted to ask was with the, uh, people who now receive stipends, there's four people. Once we get a principal in place and trained, do you see then, uh, the need to still have, uh, people go down there?
At least in the first year of transition, I, I would prefer to have a liaison at each level or a combination of, of people that are serving in that capacity to be able to work over the summer and transition that person. I know we had conversation about would it be more beneficial to hire a full-time person, a twelve-month person in that capacity. I believe the position, once established, can be sustained with, with, with a ten-month position. However, we will continue to have the need over the summer. And, and what I'm looking at is those people really focusing on student retention and looking at, at attracting those students that are currently at outside cyber charters back into our programming. So what I proposed was looking at each of our elementary principals, um, because they have small numbers, they might have had eight to ten students from their elementary building, but then also proactively going after students that are, that are, that are in outside cyber charters, each one of those representing anywhere between ten and twenty-five thousand dollars, if they would bring them back at a stipend of five hundred dollars per. Continue with the three thousand dollars, which is split at the high school or at the junior high school and the three thousand dollars, which is, is allocated for, um, a principal at our high school that is working with, with three hundred and fifty students, um, as well as scheduling and attracting all of the teachers that then provide the education on an hourly basis, coordinating all the curriculum and pro, programming and making sure that we have everything that we need to keep our students in a productive and well-run program. That total cost would be ten thousand dollars, added to the sixty-eight thousand that we were proposing for the, the ten-month principal would be the total salary of a starting principal of seventy-eight thousand. If, if the board would prefer to have one person be full-time, twelve-month, we could explore that. I would recommend at this point, though, with the transition coming, that, that we have people at each level that are going to be able to support that transition in that timeframe.
Any further discussion?
Well, I mean, that was kind of my thing too. Like, right now, we're paying upwards of thirteen thousand for, for these extra stipends. And so to me, that's a cost of eighty-one thousand. So I guess, could we look at having some sort of transition? Like, could we hire those people for a lesser stipend to kind of mentor the new person? Or, uh, could we look at like an hourly rate for so many hours up to a certain amount? Kind of like we do with teacher training, that sort of thing. I don't, I don't know if that's a possibility or not.
We, we could. I mean, I, I know that we underestimate the amount of time and the effort that they put into, not only their full-time day job, which our principals are working sixty to seventy hours a week, and then on top of that, are now then supporting a complete separate program, and they're already still working with all of the students that, that are referred out to the AEDY and the Success Choice Program. They're doing double duty in a lot of cases and it, with zero complaint. In fact, the covering of that building was the idea of our secondary principals because they recognized that there was a need to support the teachers and the staff that are at those programs now, and that, that the only way that that could happen, you know, in lieu of having a full-time administrator was to, to basically take turns and support those programs and the students that they have at that location, because ultimately the goal is to transition them back when they're ready and capable of being successful, back into their environment, whether it be at the high school or the junior high school. Um, so they've done a tremendous amount of work and working with families, um, doing that double duty. I mean, I know Mr. McGinnis, from the ACA standpoint, spends hours in the evening working with staff members down there on every, every day, transitioning students in and out, device collection, orientation, communication with parents, grading, everything that you would need to do in a normal school environment, he's doing that times two or three.
I'm, I'm not questioning the effort and the amount of time that it's taking to put in, but we're taking something that we currently pay thirteen thousand dollars for, and now we're paying sixty-eight for an administrator plus the counselor. So I'm just thinking, I mean, we do have to watch our budget because we are overspending, so, uh, that, that's my only concern, that we're now, we're continuing to pay the stipends and we're adding these positions. So I just think we have to have some endpoint in mind.
I'm the first person to look at, at fiscal responsibility when it comes to staffing. Um, you know, in terms of looking at our programming and where we can have efficiencies, we're doing that constantly. You know, what, what is the most efficient way that we can deliver services at the quality that we expect at a price that we can afford? Um, and, and I'm telling you, in, in this instance, in order to sustain these programs, to grow them, because growing them potentially has even more savings. You know, when we talk about long-term effect on the budget, if you look at the one piece of the budget that is within control, it is outside cyber costs, which right now with two hundred and seventy students in outside cybers, that bill's going to run you three to three-point-five million dollars. That is money that we can recover. That is revenue that we can get back. That's an expenditure that if we work hard, and I'm not going to promise you that we're going to bring every kid back, but that is an area that we can have an impact that will have long-lasting annual returns on the budget, and we're doing those kids a service because we're providing them with a better education than they're currently getting in the placements that they are at. We can provide them with all of the, the in-person services, hybrid programming, GACTC, all of the program is open to all of our other students. We can hybrid those students or have transitions for them to work in both a cyber virtual environment and an in-person environment. Um, I, I've seen what our staff has done in the last five years in the way that they've developed curriculum and the offerings that we have, and I'm very confident that that is one area that over the course of the next five to ten years that we can make serious inroads that will have long-term budgetary impact.
Well, I, I mean, I think there's a possibility of bringing kids from other districts into our cyber program too. So I don't doubt that, but, um, I guess the question is, you know, the, the money at this point.
It, it is valid, put it is an investment at this point. You know, I do believe when we look at it, we do look at it as an expenditure, but it is an investment, not just short-term, but it is an investment long-term in, in the programming that is not just the now, but is the future of, of In in the programming that is not just the now, but is the future of of school districts in general. School districts that are not adopting this this philosophy and mindset moving forward are going to be left behind. We have to meet kids and families where they are and we have to be able to provide a continuum, whether it be virtual, in-person combo of of the three. To students because that's what they want and and that's what they've become accustomed to.
My other question is, do we have anyone in mind for this position? Because they're taking on a lot.
It would be opposed to position, um, I mean, we have certified internal candidates. Um, that have administrative credentials that I'm I'm hoping have an interest in the position.
We don't know if anybody is interested at this point.
Until the position's approved, we've not even floated it to anything, to anyone, but.
Un- understand, yes, we had Noe Ortega, Dr. Ortega from the P D, the Secretary. Department Ed was in on Thursday. And he stated, because he was talking about cyber charter reform and the fact that the number of kids in cyber charter. Has doubled from thirty thousand to sixty thousand. In these two years with COVID. Our growth of outside cyber was at three twenty-five, it's now down around three, two seventy, two seventy-five. If we had doubled, we would have been at four hundred and fifty. And that and and the amount that that would have hit our budget would be approximately three million dollars a year. We have six hundred and seventy-some kids in in our cyber academy right now.
Right at about six hundred with our transitions and.
Right about six hundred. Those kids with special ed included, we're probably looking at a, by having that in-house, we're looking at a seven million dollar. Savings to the district. Now, we're spending about a million and a half, if I am correct with my numbers at this point. In staff to make that happen, but let's face it. A lot of the benefits of the of the S R's and cares monies that. We are being able to take care of another is is coming directly on the on the on the backs of the fact that we've been able to avoid. Having a thousand kids in outside cyber.
Our cost savings per student runs at about seventy-five percent versus an outside cyber charter. And and those are rough numbers, but it costs us about twenty-five to twenty-six, twenty-five hundred to two thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. Per kid, depending on the the amount of enrollment in their particular schedule. But when you when you cost it out, it runs us about twenty-five hundred to twenty-seven fifty per kid. As opposed to ten-five to twenty, twenty-two thousand per student.
Listen, I'm not doubting the program, I think, I mean, I think an alternative education is great and I think. They're probably getting a better cyber education within our district than going somewhere else, so tha- that is, you know, I'm not questioning that at all.
And and we fully recognize that this is a commit, this would, this is a huge financial commitment. And and I'm imploring the board to strongly consider it because it is. It is a definitive need in order to operate the programming and to grow the programming, you know, s- sitting cyber aside. You know, each one, I mean. The hot, figure the highest. Twenty-five to thirty suit, highest need twenty-five to thirty students in the secondary population. Are are currently at at the Stevens Building and I know those two programs. Each one of those students and and we don't look at them as costs, but each one of those students potentially. If we were not able to provide them services within the district, could potentially cost us. Anywhere between two and three hundred dollars per day per student. Including transportation, if we're looking at putting them in an outside placement. My opinion is that we can do it a lot better. We owe those kids more and 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 by putting them in an outside placement where the likelihood of them being successful is not real high. We owe it to them and we owe it to ourselves. To to attempt to educate those students to the best that we can, and we've done it with an amazing staff. You thought, most dedicated group of people everyone wanted to meet are the people that choose to teach in that environment. And you're talking about teachers that all of which have at least fifteen to twenty years of service. That started at Stevens, went down to W or went down to the Pleasant Valley and now back at Stevens. You know, amazing people that really care about these kids and and are vested in in providing them with what they need. We have a amazing outside counseling agencies and services that are are no cost to us. That Drew Yingling has been coordinating, bringing them in to help provide our kids with the drug and alcohol, mental health. Everything that they need to help get them back on target. You know, some of the things you've been reading in the newspapers lately about some minors and juveniles, there are kids. There are kids, there are kids that are there. So we owe it to them to try to, we owe it to them to provide them with the opportunity to be successful. And 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 I really firmly believe and I would not come to you and ask for this if it was not absolutely ne- necessary. In order for those programs to operate efficiently. It it was not the initial preliminary budget, it would be something that we. Okay, understand.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, we had a motion and a second on items A through G. Let's uh vote on E separate. So those in favor of all of the items except for E will vote on that separate, respond by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I didn't hear five votes, let's do this again. We're voting on item A, B, C, D. F and G, E, we're going to vote on separate, that's the two positions, all right? So those in favor of all of those items except for E, respond by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Did I hear five votes? Okay. All right. All right, let's go to E, let's do a real call on E.
Well, we we would, we could include one of the teachers from down there because they know the program so well as part of our interview panel, we could absolutely do that.
I just want to say my, i- if this goes, if the teachers down at Stevens have a say or a recommendation for a. You know, for a principal, because it has to be that.
Absolutely.
Certain kind of.
I I would be more than willing to to, and we oftentimes have teachers, department heads. Um, that sit on interview committees when we when we do hire for for positions, so that would definitely be something that we we could look at, absolutely.
Okay, so a real call vote on E.
Dr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Francis. Mr. Hoff. Mr. Greenwood. Mrs. Irwin Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Johnston. Mr. Mignon.
Yes.
Mrs. McGinnis. Um, I would like to abstain from the vote. If I'm able to, please. Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Passes.
Okay. All right, now we go to personnel, under personnel.
Clarify that. Um, Stephanie's abstention is because her husband is directly involved with the ACA program.
Okay.
So we have that for the minutes, thank you.
Okay, personnel items, we have A retirements. B resignations. C rescission of election, D elections. E confirmation of election and resignation dates. F change of title, status, classification. G stipends and extra duty duties. H request pertaining to lease of absence. And then under part two of that, we have athletic personnel items. Resignations of athletic elections, B athletic elections. And that's it. Is there a motion on those items? Ron, is there a second? Now, discussion. Those in favor, respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, student services, A is the Sinclair Care Coordination Agreement. That's the only item under that is is there emotion? Motion for the Sinclair Agreement? Ron, most, some motions are second?
Second.
Okay, motion and a second discussion. Okay, those in favor, respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, nine business operations, A is our photographer contract. B repository bids, C Am tram bus drivers. D capital reserve list of payments. E, I think the administration's recommending that we pull the um. Two twenty-two forty explorers, six-cylinder, is that a request to pull it? Pull the police vehicle? So there we just have for the district vehicle. And uh G is depository accounts, is there emotion for those items? Pardon me? Planetary upgrade, okay, I'm sorry, missed that one. Great, correct the bottom there, planetary upgrade bit, that's a biggie on there. Okay, so we have that one on there also, is there a motion to approve those items? Is there a second? Ron, seconds, discussion.
Absolutely.
Is it replacing a current vehicle or?
Yes. For the, for the student outreach program. It's stucky, I believe. Well, he's stucky, he'll eat.
Oh, yeah. Okay, any other discussion? Okay, those in favor, respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, item number ten, facilities maintenance, A is the Junietta Gap and Penn Lincoln window replacement. Only item on there. There emotion? Is there a second? Okay, discussion.
I just want to say get the uh, this is COVID money, yes.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, those in favor, respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So move. New business, revised revised two twenty-one, twenty-two, two two thousand twenty-two, learning express calendar. Uh, would be A, B is the uh Margrum Grievance Response. C, the high school auditorium reservation for G A C T C. D, an update to the Health and Safety Plan. Is there a motion on those items? Is there a second? Discussion.
You know, for the nurses to uh use an or auditorium, I'm glad we got that back. Because it was born elsewhere for the um. LPNs.
Well, that that was a no-brainer when Eric, Eric asked, I said, absolutely. The Margrum Grievance, uh an affirmative vote to deny the grievance moves it to the final phase of the of the arbitration process. And the update to Health and Safety Plan, a- as we've discussed, we're no longer requiring masks, it's all voluntary. And also we are in in alignment with the CDC as far as um masking on public transportation. The only time we'd be re- re- requiring a mask at this point, I believe if if someone has a has a close contact. And that's it.
At-home close contact or early return from a from a from a positive case, they can return in five days and must must mask for the for day six or ten.
Okay, any any other discussion? B, those in favor, respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So move, committee chair reports, any committee chair reports? Okay, I have no report, superintendent's report.
I would like to ask the student representative to go first because she may have everything I want to say in her report.
We successfully wrapped up winter sports um for indoor track, we had a very successful season at the. P T F C A state meet, Brooke Long placed sixth in long jump, breaking the school record. With a jump of seventeen, six and a half and Ty Friedenberger finished third in triple jump and fifth in long jump. The boys four by eighteen placed eighth, including Aiden Kelly, Braden Ferguson, George Buleyer and Gabe Eversole. For wrestling, Luke Sipes and Luke Heilman will both be moving on to the state wrestling match. Luke Heilman took silver medal and Luke Sipes took gold this past weekend in the Northwest Regional Meet. And a congrats to Will Young placing sixth there. Um, for swim, they wrapped up their season with Patrick Webster placing fifth in the five hundred free and sixth in the two hundred free. Emma Frandorfer placed sixth in the one hundred back. Jacob Steinbuegel placed fifth in the hundred back, Alexis Frandorfer placed third in the hundred meter breast and two hundred IM. And Wilson placed sixth in the two hundred IM and the girls' two hundred meter relay. Including Emma Frandorfer, Alexis Frandorfer, Gwen Fox and Caitlin Manley placed second. For music, Jane Fox and Luke Prukowski were selected for the P M E A All-State Chorus. For the Spring Musical, the Junior High Drama Club is proud to present Schoolhouse Rock Live Junior. The show, the show begins at seven PM on Thursday, March tenth and Friday, March eleventh. With an afternoon show at two PM on Saturday, March twelfth, all performances will take place in the Junior High Auditorium. And we also had a successful visit from the Secretary of Education um in the high school this past Thursday.
Thank you. For the superintendent's report, all I'd like to add is um. The website for counseling information, for course selection manuals. There is a hmm a plethora of all district-level documents that are available on the website. Also, the district newsletter that goes out monthly. Would um has quick links to all of these. All of these parts of the website so that you can get the information really available at your fingertips. Thank you.
Just to add real quick, we'll be adding our summer programming dates and times, will be coming out in April for all levels. Um, so we'll be getting that information out to parents and students, we will continue to offer a variety of programming this summer. Including uh enrichment opportunities for students as well as high-interest camps and and fun week activities at all levels, so. Parents and students should be looking for that information coming out and we'll have sign-ups then following in April.
Okay. Okay, fourteen for information only, the uh P and C Conference Reflection Information Report. Uh, B Capital Projects List of Payments for Information Only. Uh, C Facilities Committee Meeting Summary, D, the Technology Committee Summary. E, the Education Committee Summary. And that is all for information. Okay, do we have an employee union's response? Metal management, solicitor.
The only thing I would say is Attorney Jan Danback and myself will be heading out to uh San Diego at the end of the month. To present to a couple hundred attorneys at the Council of School Attorneys. Uh, and it's really on the uh issue of uh impact of uh COVID, social emotional learning and what. Ramification school uh solicitors can expect to be faced as a result of that. Uh, overall situation that packs every school district every day, but it's from the perspective of. How to be proactive and uh make sure that and at the end of the day that you're doing the right thing. To minimize claims against the school districts uh and their administrators. And as soon as that uh is presented, I will provide the uh PowerPoint to all schools where we serve as solicitor. For resources and use by administration. That's it, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, do we have a motion for adjournment?
Uh, excuse me, Mr. President, I'd just give a heads up to the district. Uh, for using a field house, we had uh three weeks ago, we had uh District Six. Double A, we hosted District Six Trip Away this past weekend, we had uh regionals and wrestling. Very well-tended, I'd like to reach out and thank the district again, the concession stands, a big A booster club, I can't say enough for that. Our security and uh and custodians, so so hats off to the district for that.
Okay, can we have a motion for adjournment? So move, is there a second?